Call the meeting in order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation, for God and for this world, with the freedom of speech.
Good evening. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the meetings held December 21st, 2020, and January 6th, 2021?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes have passed. It doesn't look like no one will sign up to address the board on non-agenda items or agenda items, thank you. Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Onto the good news report, Deanne.
Good evening. In 2021, all of us have been inconvenienced in some way or the other over the past several months due to COVID-19. And while the virus has caused inconveniences and annoyances for us like mask wearing, staying apart from one another at meetings such as this one, the virus and its effects have really starkly uncovered the needs of the already stressed systems, already stressed families, and already stressed students in our community. That may seem insurmountable unless you have the support of a community partner like the Sioux Empire United Way. And they stepped up to support our students and our families in a time of need. And I'm going to ask Patty Lake Torbird, our Student Support Services Leader, to tell you more about how the Sioux Empire United Way came to the aid of our families in this time.
I'm not going to make Marie Frederson stand up quite yet, but she is here to represent United Way, so here in just a little bit, I'll ask you to go ahead and join us. Just like Deanne said, incredible partnership. I think that all of us have tried to find either the silver lining or just a little bit of hope in these past few months since COVID-19 disrupted our lives. It didn't take long, though, for the Sioux Falls School District to actually see firsthand that there is always hope. In April, an email to Dr. Maher from Jay Powell of United Way spoke to an idea to help our families. The thought was 250 families could be helped by a donation from United Way through gift cards to buy groceries. Might just take the edge off of everything. The last $100 High V gift card was given out in early December with well over 850 families assisted with a $100,000 donation by United Way in the form of High V gift cards. Who were some of the families that were helped and assisted by this? Well, it ranges, as you can about imagine, with over 850 families that were assisted. Probably the most tragic were those that families in which a mother or father died of COVID. One of these situations, one of our school liaisons was thanked for the gift and told that the family was able to put food on the table that week that their mother had died and were able to help with family that had come from out of town. Another example that was pretty tragic was a family of five children in our school district that were helped when a family member was in a tragic car accident. With one card, they were able to supplement their grocery budget for that week and also be able to invite family in to their home during that time. Probably where the most assistance helped out, though, were for parents that had lost jobs during this time. In fact, I would say the vast majority would have been families that were financially struggling due to the loss of income. Just one example of this was a parent that was struggling to make ends meet. Her children attend school at Hawthorne and George McGovern, and due to COVID, she was not able to get her summer job. Her two other jobs that she maintains during the school year ended in May, and she did not have enough money for rent during those summer months when she couldn't get that regular summer job that she normally would. The debt weighed heavily on her mind, and when Christmas time came around and one of our social workers found out about the situation, she was able to offer a couple gift cards to the family. When they received the gift cards, we received a wonderful thank you note back saying, you know what, it just took the stress off of the Christmas time when normally I would be excited and happy but had this rent hanging over my mind. She goes, I was able to supplement my grocery budget and spend more money on rent. So tonight, we thank all of those that were involved with United Way with a special thank you to Marie Frederson, who's here tonight, and to Jay Powell for their tremendous gift that offered hope to so many families in Sioux Falls. And Marie, I think you wanted to say a few words?
I do.
One thing I've learned being on crutches is patience, and I think that's why God put me in this situation. But he also blessed me with being the chairperson for the Sioux Empire United Way. And what a year of unforeseen things and being nimble and being flexible. But it's hard to imagine the impact of people that have gone through, not only that struggle maybe consistently, but there are also a lot of new people that never happened to before, and they needed to have some relief. When Jay came to this idea and presented it to me in April, we were just starting our own assessment of what do we do within Sioux Empire United Way and how do we pull off the campaign, et cetera. And that seems so minute considering some of the issues that families have gone through. And the thing that I always get back to, one of the first things I learned with United Way is it leverages people's donations and benevolence in the community. 250 cards leveraging to 850 people, you know, imagine that. Any banker would love to have that type of ratio. So I'm forever impressed with the folks that continue to look at Sioux Empire United Way and trust their donation dollars to us. And this is a great example of the impact of families. So we're so proud to be able to do that, and we consistently want to continue to be there, obviously, for the Sioux Falls members and Sioux Falls families and the kids in the school district. So thank you so much for having the time tonight to honor us. And I know Jay is watching, and he's very proud of us, so thank you so much.
We have a certificate appreciation that we'll hand to Marie out in the lobby now.
Awesome. And the United Way has been a partner with the school district for a long time, so thank you for all you do, including this latest project. We greatly appreciate it. It helps us keep our families strong and students able to come to school, and, you know, food and getting groceries is a very important part of that puzzle piece for them to have success in our district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, there were no new conflicts of interest presented. I'll move to the consent agenda, items nine A through E. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. Items 10A, 1 and 2, claims to Sanford Health Care. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. Items 10B, claims to Verah Health. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Though that motion is approved with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Now to reports of the superintendent.
Yep, we have four reports tonight. We have the first one that will be presented by Dr. Boyson, featuring some highlights from our teacher mentor program. The second report will be with Mr. Veek and our guest on the fiscal year 20 audit report. The third report will be with Mr. Kreider, talking about our capital projects and a public hearing on those items. And the final thing will also come from Mr. Veek with a legislative update. So Dr. Boyson, you can start us off tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the district-run mentor program, give you an update on that. This is the third year that we have run the program ourselves with the support of the Department of Education. The district priority area three, district staff with priority statement six, the Sioux Falls District will explore strategies to retain high-quality staff and the initiative review the district-run mentor program. The state mentoring program was created by the Department of Education and implemented during the fall of 2016 to support mentoring of new teachers to the profession.
donation by United Way in the form of Hy-Vee gift cards. Who were some of the families that were helped and assisted by this? Well, it ranges, as you can about imagine, with over 850 families that were assisted. Probably the most tragic were those that families in which a mother or father died of COVID. One of these situations, one of our school liaisons was thanked for the gift and told that the family was able to put food on the table that week that their mother had died and were able to help with family that had come from out of town. Another example that was pretty tragic was a family of five children in our school district that were helped when a family member was in a tragic car accident. With one card, they were able to supplement their grocery budget for that week and also be able to invite family in to their home during that time. Probably where the most assistance helped out, though, were for parents that had lost jobs during this time. In fact, I would say the vast majority would have been families that were financially struggling due to the loss of income. Just one example of this was a parent that was struggling to make ends meet. Her children attend school at Hawthorne and George McGovern, and due to COVID, she was not able to get her summer job. Her two other jobs that she maintains during the school year ended in May, and she did not have enough money for rent during those summer months when she couldn't get that regular summer job that she normally would. The debt weighed heavily on her mind. And when Christmas time came around and one of our social workers found out about the situation, she was able to offer a couple gift cards to the family. When they received the gift cards, we received a wonderful thank you note back saying, you know what, it just took the stress off of the Christmas time when normally I would be excited and happy but had this rent hanging over my mind. She goes, I was able to supplement my grocery budget and spend more money on rent. So tonight, we thank all of those that were involved with United Way with a special thank you to Marie Frederson, who's here tonight, and to Jay Powell for their tremendous gift that offered hope to so many families in Sioux Falls. And Marie, I think you wanted to say a few words?
One thing I've learned being on crushes is patience, and I think that's why God put me in this situation. But he also blessed me with being the chairperson for the Sioux Empire United Way. And what a year of unforeseen things and being nimble and being flexible. But it's hard to imagine the impact of people that have gone through, not only that struggle, maybe consistently, but there are also a lot of new people that never happened to before. And they needed to have some relief. When Jay came to this idea and presented it to me in April, we were just starting our own assessment of what do we do within Sioux Empire United Way and how do we pull off the campaign, et cetera. And that seems so minute considering some of the issues that families have gone through. And the thing that I always get back to, one of the first things I learned with United Way is it leverages people's donations and benevolence in the community. 250 cards leveraging to 850 people. You know, imagine that. Any banker would love to have that type of ratio. So I'm forever impressed with the folks that continue to look at Sioux Empire United Way and trust their donation dollars to us. And this is a great example of the impact of families. So we're so proud to be able to do that. And we consistently want to continue to be there, obviously, for the Sioux Falls members and Sioux Falls families and the kids in the school district. So thank you so much for having the time tonight to honor us. And I know Jay is watching, and he's very proud of us. So thank you so much.
We have a certificate appreciation that we'll hand to Marie out in the lobby now.
Awesome. And the United Way has been a partner with the school district for a long time. So thank you for all you do, including this latest project. We greatly appreciate it. It helps us keep our families strong and students able to come to school. And you know, food and getting groceries is a very important part of that puzzle piece for them to have success in our district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, there were no new conflicts of interest presented. I'll move to the consent agenda, items nine A through E. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda. Items 10A, 1 and 2, claims to Sanford Health Care. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes with three board members and two abstaining board member, writer and board member of Nicholson. Onto 10B, claims to Verah Health. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Though that motion is approved with one abstention from board member Parker. Now to reports of the superintendent.
Yep, we have four reports tonight. We have the first one that will be presented by Dr. Boyson, featuring some highlights from our teacher mentor program. The second report will be with Mr. Veek and our guest on the fiscal year 20 audit report. The third report will be with Mr. Kreider, talking about our capital projects and a public hearing on those items. And the final thing will also come from Mr. Veek with a legislative update. So Dr. Boyson, you can start us off tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the district-run mentor program, give you an update on that. This is the third year that we have run the program ourselves with the support of the Department of Education. The district priority area three, district staff with priority statement six, the Sioux Falls District will explore strategies to retain high-quality staff and the initiative review the district-run mentor program. The state mentoring program was created by the Department of Education and implemented during the fall of 2016 to support mentoring of new teachers to the profession. The program provides teachers with zero years' experience access to a mentor teacher for the period of two years. If mentor, if new teachers come into our district with one-year experience, then we are able to provide them a mentor for one year. So total of two years. That mentor program has some requirements with that. And the mentors attend face-to-face mentoring seminar during the summer. They attend the new teacher kickoff. They have a webinar series, so three webinars throughout the year. And then after the school year is over, they attend the summer academy with their mentee or that new teacher. And they maintain a mentor log, which includes 34 hours of mentoring for those new teachers. And they have access to a swivel camera, so that way they can provide feedback to that teacher. And that's that micro teaching. That camera sits here. And as that teacher walks around, the camera follows them, and it has a microphone to pick up that. And they upload those to the cloud, and teachers and the coaches can give feedback to those teachers on that. The new teachers attend that kickoff with their mentor. Again, they have 34 hours of mentoring, and they attend the summer academy with their mentor. The focus of the mentoring program is to provide experience for the mentor and mentees, build strong relationships through sharing knowledge, leveraging skills, and cultivating talent. The primary goal of the relationship is personal and professional development for teachers in their first two years of the teaching profession. Through the mentoring relationship, mentors have the opportunity to coach, guide, and share experiences, knowledge, and skills, which contribute to that mentees' development. The graph on your screen shows the number of first and second-year mentor, mentees that we've had in the district. So this last year, or this year through the 2021 school year, we have 68 teachers with zero years' experience, and we have 62 that are back for that second year of mentoring. And so just a great program, great strength to reinforce those new teachers and help support them through that process. The district instructional coaches serve as mentors for classroom and the physical education teachers. Content area teachers serve as mentors in those specialized areas and in fine arts. The format allows coaches to focus on high-impact instructional strategies to build the new teacher's capacity through structured professional learning opportunities. The mentor-mentee relationship starts prior to the beginning of the school year with that mentor-mentee kickoff. The mentor-mentee pairs spend six hours establishing and building the relationship, develop classroom systems, management techniques, lesson structures, curriculum resources, and learning management systems to support students' learning in the classroom and at home this year due to COVID-19. So really providing that extra support with that new learning environment this year. The district-run mentor program is funded by the South Dakota Department of Education for the development of mentors to support new teachers. Mentors in specialized content areas and fine arts receive compensation for the completion of those mentor requirements. However, instructional coaches do not receive the compensation as the duties align with their job description. The funding from the Department of Ed is used to develop the instructional coaches' skills and provide opportunity for growth in coaching. The last two years, the coaches have participated in the following professional development: Kagan Student Engagement Structures, Brené Brown's Daring to Lead, Jennifer Abrams' Having Hard Conversations, and Learning Forwards Coaching Academy. Instructional coaches are invaluable resource. They have the power to influence teaching and student learning and the culture. Effective coaches can ensure 90% of staff learning transfers to the classroom. In summary, the evidence suggests strong mentoring induction for novice teachers can be a valuable strategy to retain new teachers and improve their effectiveness. The district-run mentor program, in collaboration with the South Dakota Department of Ed, provides teachers with zero years of teaching experience, access to a mentor for two years. I'll stand by for any questions, and I ask that you acknowledge the district-run mentor report.
I have a couple of questions. How did the mentoring, the 34 hours, go this year with COVID? Did they do a lot of virtual meetings? Did they, how did that?
Yep. Good question. You know, we started that kickoff, and that kickoff is part of that new hire day at Lincoln High School, the first of the year. And that was in person. And most of their coaching is in person because we are in person. If a teacher can't be there, then that virtual component is available, which is a great option. So that way, they don't have to miss out on that. And I think we've learned new ways to utilize Zoom, and it has supported the teaching and learning. Because in Sioux Falls, we're lucky enough to be together. But across the state, the mentor program's set up so I could be a teacher in Brookings, coaching a teacher in Pierce. But in Sioux Falls, we have our own teachers, our own coaches that can be mentors to our new teachers. So.
And then what happens with teachers who may start late in the year? Maybe they didn't get here for whatever reason, they got hired late, their first or second-year teachers? How do we get them involved?
Yep. We get the, if they're, if they join us prior to December 1, we get them aligned with an official mentor. But coach's job is to be a support to those new teachers. And we did that long before we had the mentor program. And so that's why their duties align with that. So they still are getting support from their instructional coach, but they're not officially in the mentor program this year, but they will be next year. And it has to do with the paperwork with the state. You know, when we first started this mentor program, I had a mentor that was assigned from the Department of Education, and I had my instructional coach. And so I had to meet 34 hours with that mentor. And then I had my instructional coach coming in, talking to me. And we took the feedback from the new teachers. They said, this is too much because I have to meet with her, and then I have to meet with him. And it just gets to be, and that's why we changed the structure of that. And of course, it was approved by the Department of Education.
Thank you.
It's great news to see the retention was the best last year since this program started because obviously, that's the ultimate goal, is to hopefully keep and retain our teachers in our district and make Becky's job a little bit easier every year when we're hiring new teachers. So that's great. And it sounds like you're continuing to look at the program and see what things might need to be tweaked from year to year to continue to have that success. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing then, do I have a motion to acknowledge the district-run mentor program?
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We acknowledge the district-run teacher-mentor program.
Next on the agenda is the audits for FY '20. So our FY '20 budgeting process started in November of 2018 when the school board approved our budget timelines and guidelines. And tonight is the culmination of that. And Dan Schelsky, who is a senior audit manager with RSM, is here to present the audit to the board. So I'll turn it over to Dan.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here with you this evening to talk about the results of the audit for the school district for the year ended June 30th, 2020. Should be noted that we did meet separately with the Budget and Finance Committee to discuss in detail the results of the audit. So for this evening's purposes, we're planning to have a summarized version of that discussion for you folks. And in that regard, we prepared some graphs that summarize not only the financial performance, but also any control suggestions that we had for the district as well. And so with that, I propose that we go ahead and move right into the discussion. If you have questions, please feel free to interject any time, or if you want to wait till the end, that's fine as well. As it relates to the audit, we are substantially complete, but not finalized. We would aim to finalize soon after pending approval at this evening's board meeting. So anticipating finalizing report here in January of 2021. Looking at the financial results, first, we have a summary of the government-wide net position, including any restrictions. It should be noted that this is an all-encompassing view of the school district's operations, and it's also presented on the full accrual method of accounting. So includes capitalization of fixed assets on the balance sheet, as well as the recording of long-term debt as liability. Looking at the total net position for both the governmental activities and the business activities of the district, you can see it is relatively flat from year to year, from 241 to 242 million. In those different components, there was about a $7 million increase in the yellow or unrestricted category, a $13 million decrease in the restricted, which is the dark red bucket, mainly due to the decrease in the pension-related deferred outflows from the SDRS Pension Plan. And in the lowest or lower portion of the column, about a $7 million increase in capital assets, net appreciation, and related debt. Next, we're going to move into the fund financial statements, starting off with the general fund. It should be noted that this fund and several of the funds in the next slides that are governmental funds are on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So in those fund statements, capital assets are expensed as those are incurred, and the debt payments are expenses that are made as well. The general fund is always considered a major governmental fund for audit purposes. Here, we have a summary of the fund balance. It should be noted that the district planned to decrease the fund balance by about $1.3 million, but property taxes and bank franchise taxes were more than budget by about $3 million, where expenses came in under budget, about $4 million, mainly in purchase services and supplies and materials. It should be noted of that ending general fund balance of $20 million. About $19.9 million of that is unassigned, which from an annual perspective, represent about 11% of the general fund's 2020 expenditures. Looking at the general fund revenues by source, this summarizes the revenues broken to local taxes, state taxes, federal grants, and other. Total revenues for the general fund increased from $175 million to $180 million this year. That $5 million increase was mainly due to increases in local taxes and state sources in fiscal year 2020. From an expenditure standpoint, the general fund expenditures were relatively flat, increased from $178 million to $179 million fiscal year 20. That's about one-half of a percent of an increase. There was an increase in salaries and benefits, but that was primarily offset by decreases in supplies, materials, and purchase services. Next, we have a summary of the general fund revenues, expenditures, and pie chart format, essentially showing that in the lower left there, that the general fund revenues are primarily supported from state sources and local taxes, which make up 89% of the general fund revenues. While from an expenditure standpoint, salaries and benefits consume 86% of the general fund's resources. Move over to the special education fund, which is also a major governmental fund. This is the fund balance shown here. It increased about $1.5 million this year, while the district had initially planned to decrease fund balance by about $800,000. It actually increased due to salaries being under budget by about $1,006,000 this year. And then moving on to the sped revenues and expenditures, the summary at the top of the sped revenues by source, including the total revenues in this fund, increased from about $45.2 million to $45.6 million. So that's about a $300,000 increase this year. While property taxes increased about $2 million. That was mostly offset by decreases in state aid and federal grants that were received this year. In the lower portion there, the sped expenditures decreased about $1,007,000 from $45.7 to $44 million this year. And that's mainly due to decreases in salaries and purchase services. The pie charts for the sped fund show that most of the sped revenues are generated from local taxes and state aid, which collectively compose 85% of the sped revenues, while salaries and benefits consume approximately 85% of the sped expenditures. Next, we'll move over to the capital outlay and project funds. These are also governmental funds. They're shown on modified basis of rule accounting. This is summarized into those amounts for capital outlay, capital improvement, hail damage, and then also the elementary, middle school, and high school projects. The total fund balance decreased about $53 million this year from 144 to 90 million. And that's primarily to using the bond proceeds that had been issued in the previous year in accordance with the district's capital improvement plan, which included expenditures for the new middle school and high school buildings, among other projects. Next, we have a summary of the post-secondary vocational fund, fund balance. This is also a major governmental fund that the district has elected to show. All governmental activities of the Southeast Technical College are included in this fund, and any capital improvements for Southeast Technical College are generally financed through this fund. The district had initially budgeted to reduce fund balance by about $900,000. However, facilities acquisition was less than budgeted by $1.8 million, which contributed to the overall increase of $1.5 million in fund balance for 35% over the previous year, leaving $5.8 million in the sped fund, in, excuse me, the post-secondary vocational fund balance. Next, we have a summary of the food service fund revenues, expenditures, and net income. This is a major enterprise fund, so this is on the full accrual method of accounting. You can see from a revenue standpoint, it decreased about $4 million this year. That was primarily due to a decrease in the number of meals that were served related to the pandemic. Expenditures decreased also, although not at the same ratio. They decreased about $800,000 to $11.9 million this year. And that was, the reason the decrease wasn't as significant as the revenues, was mainly due to the increased cost of meals served with the move towards more prepackaged items during the pandemic. In the food service, there was a net loss this year of $1.5 million, shown there in yellow. And then moving over to the food service net position, you can see the ending position there of $7 million as of the end of the fiscal year. Of that, $3.2 million in yellow was unrestricted, $600,000 is restricted there in the red column, while $3.2 million is for capital assets, net of related debt in the dark purple column. Moving over to the group health insurance fund. This is an internal service fund that the district uses to account for itself insurance plans. The revenues for this fund include both the employer and the employee insurance premiums that are contributed here, while the expenses primarily consist of medical claims that are paid out. From a revenue standpoint, the revenues increased about 11% to $41.7 million this year, while expenses decreased 2% to $36.6 million, which yielded an increase in fund balance of about $5 million there, shown in yellow. And moving over to the group health insurance fund summary, you see the $5 million increase left an ending balance in that net position in that fund of about $15 million, which, if you look at that from an annual perspective, would represent about 41% of the group health insurance fund's expenditures from an annual basis. Next, we have a summary on the last two slides here of the post-audit communications from us as your auditors to those that are charged with governance, which would be Youth Board. The district did not identify, didn't not have any new significant accounting standards that were implemented this year. As far as audit adjustments, there was an adjustment to increase payroll liabilities and cash in certain funds and on the government-wide statements, and reduce those amounts in the payroll withholding agency fund, in addition to an item to reclassify the deficit fund balance in the bond redemption fund from restricted to unrestricted. As far as any uncorrected misstatements, those would be misstatements that management has determined that are immaterial, and we agree with them in that regard. There were items noted here to move the remaining payroll liabilities and cash from the payroll withholding agency fund to the funds in which those liabilities were originally incurred in, as well as to record capital leases to increase the food service deferred revenue, adjust the allocation of internal service fund net income within the government-wide statements, and to reclassify certain amounts in the general fund balance to be non-spendable and restricted from unassigned. We did not identify any significant or unusual transactions during the course of the audit, and then the significant accounting estimates are included there for your review. On the last slide here, we have a summary of any internal control or federal work compliance findings that were noted. It should be noted that there was no reportable compliance findings noted as part of this single audit. We did have a material weakness in internal control for financial reporting that was noted related to the review of fund balance and interfund cash receivables and payables. And separately, there were other control deficiencies that were identified and communicated separately to management. And so with that, I would open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Dan. I think it's important, thank you for the food service fund, to point out that that significant cost increase, you know, the district, this spring made a commitment to our families to continue to provide food through the, even though our doors were closed to the students. So that, we knew that was going to be an issue going forward. And with the change with the USDA and so forth, that should be flattening out going forward. And then I think it's also important to notice on the group health insurance plan, our premium holiday that we just awarded to our staff and families, was not noted on that amount, larger amount on there. So that will be decreased significantly going forward on that as well. But the material weakness, I think I'm going to ask either Todd Veek or Ken Moser if they could address that for the public and for the rest of the board members who weren't at the audit committee, that since the district does dispute the categorization of the issue as a material weakness due to the nature and resolution of the issues, is it Ken or is Ken going to do it? Okay, thank you, Ken. If that'd be okay, Dan, if they could step up and explain that, too. Thank you.
Good evening. Ken Moser, Compteur. I was going to point out, too, that in the large audited financial statement packet, the last page has a corrective action plan. And that also talks about the finding and the corrective actions that we're planning the corrective actions that we're planning to do going forward. So the finding basically had three stated effects, and the first stated effect was that the cash and payroll-related liability amounts that were reported in the payroll withholding fund, which is an agency fund, understated such amounts in the fund financial statements and the government-wide financial statements by a total of 6.6 million as of June 30 of 2020. So each month, the employee deductions and employer fringe benefits for payroll taxes, insurance premiums, and other items are transferred to the payroll withholding fund and paid to the appropriate vendors out of that fund. Accounting guidance states that for reporting purposes, these payroll liabilities should be not be reported in the payroll withholding fund, but should be reported in the individual funds from which they came. So it's been past practice for many years that that reclassification of those payroll-related liabilities out of the payroll withholding fund and back into the individual funds was an adjustment passed by the auditors and included on the past adjustment schedule, and we thought that this would continue. However, with the implementation of the new finance software system, the June 30th payroll-related liabilities were all transferred to the payroll withholding fund during the payroll interface process, as opposed to a check being written to the payroll withholding fund subsequent to year-end, which was the way it was done in previous years. And that resulted in significantly higher balances in the payroll withholding fund at June 30 of 2020 than in previous years. So because of this, the auditors could no longer pass on the adjustment, requiring the district to post that reclassification. RSM requested, and we provided an entry to reclassify these balances. The corrective action will be that we will create a reclassification journal entry for posting to the audited financial statements each year going forward and provide this along with all the other schedules and entries we provide during the audit. The second stated effect was that certain accounts within the payroll withholding fund have not been reconciled on a timely basis. We agree that the accounts related to specifically medical insurance premiums, dental insurance premiums, and life insurance premiums have not been reconciled on a timely basis. This is due to the complexity of the reconciliations, the implementation of the new finance system, and personnel absences from maternity leave and long-term medical leave. However, estimated payments and/or invoice payments have all been made on these three premiums. Therefore, the balances in the payroll withholding fund are materially correct. So the corrective action on that will be that the payroll personnel will continue to work on getting caught up on reconciling these accounts to the detailed payroll deduction registers. Then the third stated effect was that the fund balance restricted for debt service in the audited financial statements was initially understated by 1.8 million. This relates to the current negative fund balance in the bond redemption fund. It was our understanding that fund balances of special revenue funds, such as the bond redemption fund, were to be reported as restricted for the purposes of the particular fund. However, the auditors brought to our attention that a negative fund balance should be reported in the financial statements as unassigned rather than restricted. So the corrective action for that will be that future negative fund balances will be reported as unassigned rather than restricted. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for that explanation, and Nann and I were able, we were sat on the audit committee, and the other thing that Todd pointed out, like you did mention, is basically the perfect storm of a new accounting system and employee health issues or maternity leave that kind of led to a lot of these things. So we even asked if, do we need more staff in that department? And it sounds like now that some of those have been passed, it should, it should be able to be on a time.
Okay, thank you.
I think in just sitting on the committee and reviewing all the good works that you do day in and day out, I just want to really uplift all the things that are going right. This is a technical issue, and it's being addressed, and thank you for the work that you all put into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dan, any other questions for Dan or Ken from other board members? Okay, sing none. Do I have acceptance of the audit for the 20-year from RSM report presented today?
Some of second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Sing none. All those in favor of the audit report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes, and then it will go to legislative table review, right? Is that the other step there? Please, thank you very much.
Good evening. I have the public hearing for various projects. We have five projects tonight to discuss, and I'll go through that, and then we can open it up to the public for their input if there's anyone here to talk to. So number one is Lincoln High School. The project's going to construct an exterior restroom on the east side of the building for security during exterior events, and expand the existing training room to meet district standards. Then we're going to integrate quite a few capital outlay projects with this one. We're going to construct a tennis storage building adjacent to the courts. There's going to be some dominoes. We're going to relocate the orchestra classroom north of the current location, and this will allow us to construct a corridor into the fitness center and also provide some extra space for music to get it out of the exterior storage into the, into the building, so they'll have better control over their environment for the instruments. Instruments. We're going to replace the windows in the E wing and also repair the metal wall panels that have been kind of beat up there, but they're the original 1964 wall panels, so several of them are in pretty tough shape. So we're going to be doing that. We're going to replace the metal lockers in the boys' locker rooms, and we'll also do some lighting replacements in the upper cafeteria and library areas. The project we bid this winter, we actually have a staff meeting tomorrow to go through all these. We've had several meetings already with the principals and administration, and so we're going to meet with staff and go through that, and we'll bid it shortly after we get their input and then be ready to go for the start of the school year. So the funding for this is bond, $390,000 in bond, in the CIP bond, and then capital outlay is $950,000. The next, next project is JFK. This is kind of like we did last year with Cleveland. We were holding the public hearing a little earlier than we need to, to allow us to be out for bids, because Cleveland is out right now, and we'll be bid probably, I think, the 21st, and give us that opportunity to get bids earlier on these bigger projects. So this one's quite a bit bigger project. This will construct a new gymnasium, associated areas, convert the existing multipurpose room into a band and general music classrooms, then we'll convert the existing gym into the multipurpose room, and we'll construct a new drop-off and parking lot to the south of the building. So extend out to where the parking lot is now, and there'll be a lot of dominoes that will happen with that. Capital outlays projects that we would like to incorporate into this project is get rid of the movable walls between classrooms and construct permanent walls, update ceiling and lighting in all classrooms, and then upgrade fire alarm, intercom, and clock systems. This one will be bid next year at this time, and with the completion of August 2023. So it'll be a couple-year, couple-summer project. The bond portion of this project is for $4,540,000 with $10,000 in furniture and equipment, and the capital outlay that includes all the walls and those sort of things is $1.2 million. The next project is Jane Adams Elementary, and this will be a little different from what the original CIP is, because we obtained the property and we want to kind of put it together as one project. So this, this project will construct two classrooms, two music rooms on the west side of the building. We'll demolish the two houses that we've acquired, and we'll relocate the playground to that, the southeast corner of the building, and then we'll construct a new parking lot where the existing playground is. We'll, we'll get the playground off Q on us avenue, where it'll be a much safer situation for all the kids involved. The capital outlay portion of this project is renovate two existing restrooms, like to install a fire sprinkler system in the building. There's only two buildings in the district that's not fire sprinkled, and this will give us an opportunity where we can do the water service where, or through the playground and get that done, so we don't have to do it in the future. Replace existing galvanized piping in the tunnels, also update fire alarm, intercom, and clock systems, and repaint corridors and provide some new foretile in the corridors. This, this project will be bid in March 2021 with the hope that it will be done in August 21 for the start of the school year. We should be able to get started with the playground construction as, you know, in, in April, right after the bids. This, the cost for this one is construction for the bond is 1.915 million, furniture and equipment, and that's primary, the 350,000 is primary play structure that's going to be put on the new playground, and then the capital outlay is 570,000 for all the miscellaneous things inside. Okay, number four is instructional planning center. This is a small bond portion, but it's construct a security area for the receptionists in the lobby here, and also provide some security offices, or not offices, but conference rooms that HR can meet people and go to, and they can, they won't have to go into the office areas when they meet with certain people during certain times of the, when they're, depends on who they're meeting. How's that? Then also the capital outlay portion of this is construct a small addition on the north side for exterior storage and community education material storage, and then what we'll do is convert the old exterior into a curriculum storage, you know, book room on the, on the south side of the building. Okay, and the cost of this, well, the bids, the bids we'll receive in late spring and with a November completion, so we have a little bit of time to complete this one. We'll try to get the lobby done first and with exterior storage later on, and we don't have kids to worry about out here. The bond, the bond portion is 59,000, and the capital outlay portion is 300,000 for this project. And the final one is Patrick Henry. This is all capital out, this is not a bond portion. This is, we'll replace all the corridor lockers throughout the school, renovate a music practice area, and remove the movable walls in the science area and construct permanent walls. Been asking that for this one for quite some time. And this project will be bid in winter of 2021 and scheduled for August 2021 completion. And the total cost of this is $690,000. So with that, that is all the projects listed, and I'm here to answer any questions and open it up to the public for any input.
First of all, any questions?
No, I just think sometimes we get caught up in the two new schools, and we maybe not necessarily forget, but don't shine a light on all the other projects as much. And so just a great reminder of the bond that the community so enthusiastically supported. It's not just the students going to these new schools that will see the benefits of that, but these, I mean, I know the last one's not technically bond money, but still, you know, five, here's another five schools that will see the benefits of having improved structures, you know, safer, secure schools, even just the aesthetics of updating things that have been around for forever. So I like to see that so many of those will be right away this fall as students are coming back and will be able to enjoy some of those new amenities that they'll, they'll have in their school.
We are all hoping that everything will be done on time.
Yes.
And COVID changes things, and you just never know what you're going to deal with as you move forward. So far, we've been pretty fortunate.
Jeff, the spreadsheets, the Excel spreadsheets that you keep are expansive, both in detail and scope, so that it's not accidental that we're running on budget and on time. So congratulations, and it's really quite remarkable, all that we're keeping.
We're following our spreadsheets that we went through with that whole bond, and this has the preventive maintenance and those sort of things that we're trying to roll into those, so.
Yeah.
We'll get you an updated one as one of these first days. Okay.
Okay, I'll open it up for the public hearing then. Anyone here to speak on bond projects? Sing none. We will close the public hearing. Moving on, do I have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and authorize the administration to complete the planning process and proceed with the bidding phase of the project?
Some of second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks for keeping our community working. You're really providing a lot of jobs. Appreciate that.
The days go by really fast.
The next report is on our legislative update. It's one of several we'll have over the next couple of months, and it'll be the shortest. As you know, last week, we had area legislators in to go over, give them, you remind them a little bit about the demographics of the district and then go over some of our priorities for the legislative session and then out into the future as well. So the session actually starts tomorrow, but, and you know, our process is to look at bills that are submitted, and then we write up a proposed, a proposed position on it and then bring it to the board for approval. So every year, there are, there are bills that are written by the agencies, or members of the agencies anyway, that get pre-filled, so there are a few in there right now that we've, we've written up for you for tonight, and I'll just go through those real quick. Stop me if you have questions on those or disagree with the position. House Bill 1007 is a cleanup bill regarding bid bonds. We have no position on that. House Bill 1025 is cleaning up outdated language that's contained in the education statutes. We have no position on that. Senate Bill 45 just repeals a required annual survey regarding CPR. Recommended, no position on that. Senate Bill, oh, I think I, Senate Bill 46, sorry, that actually allows remote learning hours to count toward the minimum number of hours required in a school term during a stated emergency. So we, we actually support that bill, recommending support of that bill. And then the last one is Senate Bill 49, which is the governor's proposed 2.4% increase versus what would be if you, if you, the index factor, if you followed what's in law, you know, that carries over from year to year, which would be 1.5%. So we are recommending supporting that as, as you know, over 85% of our general fund expenditures are salaries and benefits, and close to 90% of our general fund non-federal revenue is derived from the state aid formula. So if, you know, we're all, we all in the legislature are looking at teacher salaries and all, all employees' salaries, but teacher salaries and improving those and trying not to fall back like we did over the first 15 years of the millennium. So if you look at what state aid would be in the last five years, if you just strictly followed, if you just strictly followed the, what's in the statute for the index factor of 3% inflation, whichever is less, you get 0.3, 0.3, 1.7, 2.3, and then 1.5. That's a 1.22% average over those five years, which is not enough to keep up with state government employees, other governmental employees, or the private sector. So we think the governor's on the, on the right track with that, and we recommend a support, and we're calling it a key bill. And you know, the key bills are the ones that we act, we ask our lobbyists to get out there and actually actively support and testify for those bills. So that's, that's what we've analyzed so far, and then we would just ask that you, you know, approve those bills as recommended or, or any amendments that you might have to our positions. I'll stand by for questions. Thanks.
I just want to thank everyone who participated in the legislative breakfast from IPC. It was our second year doing it, and it was very well attended by the legislators, and they're very appreciative of the information that we provide them. And I heard from several of them that they wish other entities had a website that puts out their positions and who to contact and so forth. So thank you very much to all of you who do that. So thank you very much to all of you who do that and take the time to do that. And we're here early last Wednesday morning to attend because I think that is time well spent with them as, before they head out to peer. And other than that, I think I agree with all this. It sounds great. So this is, this is the easy day at one of this. It will get a lot longer, like you said. Any other comments?
Last one sticks.
Exactly. Or goes higher.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to, whoops, excuse me. Did my phone just beep? Sorry about that. Do I have a motion to approve the positions of the school district on the House bills and Senate bills presented this evening for 2021?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. They are approved. Thank you very much, Todd.
Thanks.
Onto policies. Kate handling that tonight.
Yeah, we have, let's see, seven policies that are up for review revision tonight. All but one of them had no changes, so we are recommending just review revise on these. I'll go through each one. DID inventories, no changes were recommended. DJE bidding procedures, we updated language to match state law by changing the number of days allowed for bids to be tabulated from 30 to 45 before being presented to the board. DJEA deposit and performance bond requirements, no changes were recommended. DJF, local competitive purchasing, no changes. DJG, vendor relations, no changes. DLB, tax sheltered annuities, no changes. And JLA, student insurance programs, no changes. So I would move to approve the review revision of the above policies or the said policies. Second.
Motioning second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the review and revisions of the stated policies signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those carry. Onto the setting of the 2021 election date. Is Todd doing that too? And it's Kate and Todd's seat this year that will be.
That's right. We have, you all have three-year terms and Board Member Parker and Tulkey's terms are up in July. When we're in a even numbered year, we always, we almost always combine with the city. When we're in an odd numbered year, there's no way to combine with. So we, we do our, we do our own election. So what you have in front of you is the administrative recommendation to approve the resolution designating May 18th, 2021 as election day. I'll just point out just a few quick deadline dates and then I'll turn it over to you to act on the resolution. If it's approved as presented, nominating petitions may be, start to be circulated on March 9th. The last day to file those petitions would be April 9th. Deadline for voter registration would be May 3rd. Election day would be May 18th. The board would canvas the results of the election on May 24th. And the elected individuals would take office on the 12th of July. So as I said, I would just ask the board to, if you agree with it, to approve the, approve the resolution designating May 18th as election day. And I'd stand by for any questions. Thanks.
And a point of clarification for the public, three-year terms is set by state statute.
Yeah, right.
So that's why we have that odd year. It's not by our choice. It's, that's how it's set. So any other discussion on the dates?
I would just add that I like it when we can have our elections when the school, school year is still in session because I think that parents are more engaged and the community is more engaged when our students are in school and still participating. So I know sometimes we've had to have it in June when school is out and that's due to us using our buildings for voting and trying to keep our kids safe and the least disruption as possible. But I understand this year we have a way to maybe really minimally use our own buildings. And so that's why we can have this election be in May instead of after school is out. So hopefully, hopefully we've all learned a few things about elections in the past several months and how important it is to get out and vote. And so I'm hoping that, you know, with our, us being in school this, during this time, that we'll have a better turnout than we typically do for just those standalone elections.
I think it's important to note too that one of the reasons we choose to use voting centers, a more consolidated voting center is just to obviously save resources and again, keep our kids safe and maybe not have all of our buildings utilized during this time. So it's a little different than when we do a, a general election, but, but it's, it's more efficient this way.
Exactly. And absentee ballot or voting will be open here. What was the date? I saw that on here too.
Yeah.
May 3rd, it looks like, maybe? So that will be open ahead of time and they can come down here and vote too if that 18th date is not available. So do I have a motion to approve the resolution designating May 18th, 2021 in the timeline as for the election?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That date and timeline is approved. Anything else for the good of the group? Go Ohio State. I'm just kidding. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.